The time is six thirty two P. and we will call the regular town council meeting to order. We will call to order and we will have invocation and pledge allegiance.
Father God, as you've come before us tonight, and I took this room so that we as a community, as council, as citizens could come together, so and to do what's right for our town, the place that you created, and to bless each and every one of those who Jesus sent.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you not have roll call? Mayor Rivers?
Here.
Mayor Williams present. Councilor Wiggins?
Here.
Councilor Jordan Watson? Doc present. Councilor Kessy Berg?
Present.
Do you have any additions, deletions, and or amendments to the current agenda? With that being said, may I please have approval of the minutes on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and May fourteenth? May I please have the agenda approved as written?
I need a river to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? With that being said, we want the approval of the minutes for May twenty eighth? All in favor? I have any opposers? And then there is welcome to take back and defend the property. Now, may I have approval of the minutes, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and May fourteenth, twenty twenty four?
I need a major rivers make a motion and approve the minutes for May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and May fourteen, twenty twenty four.
May I have a second?
Our kids are first.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? I have any opposers, I'm saying right. None of them will care. Mr. Richard Powell, could you please come to give us your financial report?
Yes. It's always just a pleasure to deliver the monthly financial report, which I handed out. Okay, so the town of White Springs being the government has two funds, a general fund and an enterprise fund. So the first three pages are the general fund, that's next to me, I'll add a better label. And so through April, okay, so this is through April, April pro rata budget would be fifty eight percent. So the general fund revenues were five ninety nine oh seventy nine. Your total budget is one million five sixty two. So you are at basically sixty percent. So you should be at fifty, you're a little bit more at sixty, so that is good as a reference. Hey, there's line items for each department, but if you go through the third page, radical pop, your expenditures through the seven months were five eleven oh sixty four. Your budget's nine twenty two two oh five. So your expenditure expenditures are about fifty eight percent, it would be good. Your expenditures are about fifty five percent, so you're under budget a little bit, so that that is good and positive. Again, we're only seven months into the year, but that's a good trend. Okay, so the last two pages are the enterprise fund. And the enterprise fund, because you collect the, it operates off user charges, you collect the money fairly evenly. So your revenue is four hundred and four thousand four twenty. The total budget's six fifty three twenty two. So again, fifty eight percent is kind of the target. You have actually collected sixty two percent in the revenue side, so you're a little bit ahead of the budget, and that's good. Again, there's line items for, there's amounts for the line items. If you look on the last page at the bottom, your total expenditures in enterprise fund are two hundred eighty eight nine fourteen, which up to fifty eight percent would be on budget, but that's only about forty nine percent. So you're under budget, and there is showing now an excess revenue over expenditure of a hundred fifteen thousand five oh eight. So this fund is also trending well. So any questions from the council?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Richard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't get already got mine. Please don't. Y'all really over budget.
I need to say it quickly and leave.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have administrative and department reports. Town manager Vanessa George?
Okay, right now, we are trying to fight to get our water grid back. We're sending documents to prove that we can handle another loan as far as for the water grid. We've also working on the CDV, actually fired, just hurt. And we have, Mr. Powell gonna kill us, but we found out that a lot of the property that the town owns is not insured. So when FMIT called, Audrey, they asked, hey, we want to keep the insurance, he said it's about time for us to do an inventory. We asked, Ray, who can do the inventory, but they said we'll send somebody out. So we had somebody else come out from FMIT to do the inventory. We found out that stuff like what, Audrey, the fire department was not even on the insurance?
One million dollars left.
That's left of assets that's on there, so we just got this report yesterday. So we may have to call emergency meeting for us to go through it, because some things on there we may not want to insure. That I think that we can take off, and the reason I said we're gonna take it off, I mean, we need to take it off because the insurance is going from twenty five thousand to fifty thousand.
For right now.
For right now, based on everything that they have, I think they had the fire department, what, fifty five thousand?
Yes.
And the building.
Yeah, they had the old, they had the old, yeah, everything they had was old assets. We got that new live station out there, so we've had, we had a meet with FMIT, what was that, Audrey?
Yes.
They asked me this, you say in the fire department fifty five thousand, was that that fire department or the old fire department? That's all they had in the old FMIT.
No, was it on this building though?
Yeah, oh, sure, remember?
They have the dentures, so they. So if something happened to the fire department, y'all was just gonna get fifty five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah, we have, but it's some things that I think that we can take off to lower that fifty thousand dollar bill, like stop signs.
Yes.
We got how many?
Thirty five.
Thirty five that we insuring, the signs, the welcome signs, it's a lot of little stuff that we probably gonna end up paying out of pocket because if we did use the insurance, the out of pocket expense is probably gonna be more than what it is. We gotta buy a stop sign, rate on the place the stop sign before without going through insurance. So we insuring thirty six stop signs for what?
So it's a lot.
Yeah, so.
Thirty five thousand.
It's thirty, it's fifty one pages worth of stuff. But we just got it yesterday, so we can have enough time to give it to you all to review. So what we want to do is send it to you all, y'all review it, y'all look at the pictures of what y'all think you can probably take off and not insure, because of the, well, probably more than the item, like I said, the stop sign. There was some other stuff on there that was crazy. Even the bathroom at the little, the guy from FMIT was actually telling us like, the empty is, was like, I wouldn't even insure because it was the cost of it.
Nobody ever used it, even on that building, it's open.
That bathroom that's there, this is how much, Audrey?
Fifty something.
At the community center. Yep, but the bathroom.
Well, because you know, a car want to build a bathroom.
It's, no, it's a cost a lot, insure. I think we should have a liability on all the property, but not. We don't even use that building by the veterans part. I would like to that water tower, old water tower down, but that's, that's insurance on there too. Y'all didn't get a breakdown, we just, just got it yesterday. I was trying to push it through, but I just like, ain't giving people no time. Y'all have to ask, I would get it, this is what, fifty one pages?
Fifty one pictures and papers, they'll put numbers to it, so you'll see what insurance will cost. And what's happening is things that have not been on the insurance since the conception of White Springs, Florida, that there are things on there that need to be put on there that never was there. And ninety percent of it is under insured.
Yeah, so it's like we raising the bill, but we have to insure the fire department, you know, a lot of stuff that we have. Yeah, that's what we're trying to get at that.
Hope it works right. Please don't ask for anybody.
I had a hard work, a little work coming over the day. A lot of work came over the day with camera. And the camera that line up Ms. McClure's residence at one six four six four Spring Street, which is the house beside no pill on the Spring House curb. Unfortunately, they only had two hundred feet of camera lead to go through the line. So we went approximately a hundred eighty five feet, and we were still inside of three eighty C five. So they're working with me now to get a, maybe a four hundred foot to find out that she is in a cement tank or somehow tied in a city sewer. So once they find out where we can get the equipment for that, then they're gonna let me know, and we're gonna re-camera her line. But, I mean, right now, I still don't know, I mean, we can see where ninety or forty five down, it goes down into the slope. But approximately seventy five feet after that, came out of lead for camera. So, but we will follow up on that as soon as I can get a different camera with more lead on it. And then also at one six six three oh, which was mentioned, the sycamore tree that was mentioned last month at a council meeting. I told Levi, the tree, it isn't dead or anything, there's nothing wrong with tree. It is leaning towards Ms. McCall's house, but the tree's not dead. But, I mean, we can cut it down, whatever the other side do, that's all we're gonna do. But Levi, he looked at the tree, and he said the tree's not dead, and I mean, it could be there a hundred more years or four hundred more years. But it does have a slight leaning towards Mrs. Chairman McCall's property.
But that's only if it break from the roof, correct? This is probably how it break from the roof, and this is probably.
No, no indication of some roots or anything.
Right, but I'm saying, the only way we hit her house is if it had a break from the roof.
Yeah, but if it's like any tree, I mean, if I heard King Kong, I mean, but that could be any tree within the town. So, I mean, whatever the other side, I just need to know what y'all wanna do.
I think if Levi, he's a tree man, so it listens to him.
Trees are aggravating, they, in the fall, they shouldn't leave every tree on that tree of fall. I'm not, I hate to, I'm gonna, I hate it, I wish he could, that's all I'm going down. But, I mean, for the tree, Levi said, you know, there's no indication of the tree being dead, or, you know, just gonna fall.
Thank you, Ray. Did you think anything? Trent, Trent.
So, yeah, we're very thankful, fortunately, we still have a fire department even after the cafe shut down. But we're just maintaining everything, the equipment, the trucks, the stations, we're trying to provide the best coverage as we can. We are down one, AJ moved out of state. So at the end of the week, we always give you up what days we can work, so I'm obviously gonna be here tonight, Daniel's gonna be here tonight, and for thirty six hours straight. So we're continuing to get the best coverage we can with what we have.
We appreciate you, Mrs. Mary, we appreciate you, thank you so much for hanging there with us. Let me ask, can you get with Steve to find out a good date to have community, unity day, so we can have a big thing here for the fire department?
I can talk to him, yeah, but the only issue we run into is we all have full time jobs in Lake City, so, and they're conflicting shifts too. So I'm on sea ship now, Daniel's on A, and Lockwood's on A. So getting us all here at one time will be a challenge, but majority of us here, yeah, we can probably work that out. But I would encourage anyone, if you want to come see the fire department, don't stop by, we are there majority of the time. If we're not there during the day, we're obviously on ship, but we try to come in and do back halves, front halves, twenty fours, whatever we're able to work to provide for y'all. So if you want to come see it, I would just encourage y'all to come see it, if we're there, we will show you around the equipment, the stations, you can meet us, you can get to know us. We are there majority of the time. But I will talk to Steve about putting on a date report.
Thank you. So citizens, please save the opportunity to go and meet your fire department.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Trent.
No problem.
Hey, we don't have any presentations for tonight. Citizens, on the court, request form, which I have, five minute, then please, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Ms. Tate Dickerson?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll be honest, I almost didn't come up there, almost because we got the, you know, in our last meeting before this meeting started, it got heated. But I feel like when we were talking about all of the negative things that people were saying about White Springs, that if I don't come up and make sure to do stuff, then.
Good, that's all they have, all that stuff.
So I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that our summer nap program, we, yes, we had to reduce the number of spots to twenty, but we are full, we're in our second week, we already have all of our field trips planned out, the children will be going to Santa Fe Teachers, um, teach them too, I'm sorry. They'll be doing other fun things like going to splash parks and skating and different things like that. Also, they'll have different people from the community talking to them next week. Like we have a, hey, my daddy was gonna come and see them next week. Um, we also have members from help, we're gonna see them next week, as well as like E and H tires, they'll be learning from them, they'll go out to the library, meeting people from the community. It's just a lot of positive things that is going on. Um, I just met these kids, and they love it, when I tell you they don't want to go home, they're waking up before their parents. Like, it's, it's just amazing, and I would want to invite, if anyone has time, just come in and just view what we're doing. Um, starting next week though, anywhere after like one o'clock, when we're having like our presentations, we want people to come out and actually see what we're doing. Um, so people know that there are positive things going on, and White Springs are actually changing lives, that's all I got to say.
Also, I think we need to see the wall that Tate has in the church. Part of it is where the kids threw pictures of the things that they learned at the museum, they like seeing the historic stores, the museum. I visited the church on Sunday morning, and I presented with the check for the one thousand five hundred forty four. And she showed me the difference.
What's the date on that?
From the program. Until August second. Yes, through August second, Monday through Friday, like you said. But because of vacation vows going this week, they're not having them here.
Right.
But they don't go back to. And that's from eight to?
August from ten to five.
Ten to five. Yes, yes. You could go on Friday when y'all not working.
No, I'm, I'm.
I told her I would love to come, but I'm working four times. Say, what day do y'all don't have anything scheduled, everything scheduled out?
No, we still have a few more days, I can't, I don't know right now, because I have a calendar in front of me, but I can send out some open.
Yeah, give me a call, I have, I'm a crafter, I know, I would like to, I'm a crafter, I have a lot of jury making supplies, bees. I would love to come there one day, and then, you know, me and the kids, and, you know, some of the council, make some jury. I have all the jury. I got too much, I didn't.
I just, I just like to tell, tell you thank you. The sign, one thirty six, it was having to go to a car wreck. The letters on that sign were metal or aluminum letters. Well, when the wreck happened, or actually happened, a lot of letters were missing. Well, Tate came in, and she spent all day painting those letters, and you would never know how much of that sign that you made. I just want to tell her thank you.
Okay, you know, I'm glad you mentioned that real wood, like the major permission, because we have to redo our sign in the front, but instead of going to somebody outside of the community, I would like to employ somebody inside the community, and possibly let Tate do the sign as our front.
It's just changing the names.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you already got me.
Yes, but I didn't think. But I called him yesterday, he wanted to come.
I'm sorry. But I just thought about what I was saying there.
I could, I mean, yeah.
He had.
I'm, I'm not doing.
I know you are, yeah.
I'm sorry.
But thank you, Tate.
This is Jim Tompkins. Long time no see.
Yeah. My name is Jim Tompkins, still MPKIS, I address six one one five South East County Road, one thirty five Jasper. I attend the White Springs Methodist Church, and they asked me to come before the council about oak tree, and apparently it's on city property there. I guess during the last storm, a couple of limbs fell off onto the road, the city moved it off the road, or town moved it off the road. A member of the church cut it up and removed, removed the limbs. They had a tree surgeon come out, and the tree surgeon said, that is a great potential, the next significant storm, the additional limbs will fall off and possibly the entire tree. Uh, he said, for the streets on the tree, that it's apparent that it's been hit by lightning multiple times. I'm certainly not qualified to say if it, I want to, how much it would have to fall to reach the church or the property across the street. But of course, the danger for the town is if it did fall, fall on a passing car, you'd hope that people would be out in a significant storm, which is what people do. Uh, and more forbid, you know, forbid if it would have hit, you know, car people in it, in addition to property damage. And, but it would definitely, depending on which way it fell, would actually would easily take out the power. So they, the church wanted me to ask the council to consider if we do that tree. That's a.
It's a tree, that's a tree.
That's not a tree, that tree there don't need people. That, that tree we go to Alhampton.
Yeah.
That tree don't need people.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Some of y'all, you won't get, anybody get a phone?
Okay. Scott Gay?
Scott Gay, one zero five six five Kendrick Street, here on behalf of Don Harbor Store, he's interested in putting on the Zalia Festival next year if the town is not. But he just needs the town to say, you're, you're gonna do it or you're not, so he can start working on logistics, so if you consider that, let him know if you're interested. Yeah, well, it just, just to work out, just making that request for him.
He called today.
I think the town, the citizens gonna do all of those special events anyway, right?
We have a special event committed, if, if we don't have one, I mean, if people like to do it, it's more than welcome to. We don't have the funding, we're not gonna have the funding for all of the festivals we usually do, because of. It hurts, I'm glad we got to take the money from the special events.
Is that all of the citizens, all the press on the floor? Old Business Ordinance Number twenty four zero dash one second reading, renaming Street, Florida L King Street. This is ordinance number twenty twenty four zero one, this is our second and final reading that will be dated for today's date, which is June eleventh, twenty twenty four. This is an ordinance of the town council for the town of White Springs, Florida, renaming Colonial Street a road, within the town's road system as Florida L King Street, providing for several ability and providing an effective date. Council members have a motion to accept the second reading for ordinance number twenty four dash zero one.
I need a river to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty four dash zero one second reading, renaming Street, Florida L King Street.
May I have a second?
I say.
Any discussion?
So we spoke with emergency management, and they were talking with us, and they said, when we do these streets, we may want to think, even with this one, about making it go honorary, because they have to send something in, and they sent something in recently with the mapping of White Springs, and it's going to affect, everything's going pretty much wrong, and we renamed that Florida King. They're saying, maybe possibly, when we do these streets, we put an honorary sign on top of the street, it's an honorary, just like they didn't make cities for a young lady, Mariah. They made the street honorary, but they didn't change the street, and that's why you get a lot of pushback from the citizens, because they're like, everybody got to change, and it's, it's a mess. But if you can make it honorary, then they still have the honor of that street, but it's still the same, and it does not affect the nine one one, it does not affect emergency management, because it takes a minute for it to get in that system. I don't know what we will do with this one, but we want to think about start making these streets honorary, because that, that other street was, feels messy. Trying, trying to change that, also.
How do you know this, and you're the owner, let me change it?
Because I know for that, they still have our problems getting colonial, they're still getting their, their U K S packages and stuff. FedEx cannot find them on colonial, if you know what's changed from Kendrick Street extension to colonial, and they still aren't getting enough. So changing this again like this is detrimental.
All the thing, so, but all the thing with this, where you have to rescind all this, and the family is not wanting to have it honorary.
But it's not up to them now, that part is not, I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying, since we've done it.
But it's not been voted.
Yeah, we have a, we have a regular reading.
Well, in the same of all the citizens and all this stuff, I think honorary is best.
Right.
Also, I know you and I are gonna disagree on this, because we're here with emergency management, and even with emergency equipment, that Tuesday, we was thinking, just like you're saying, it's still messed up with colonial. People are still not getting it, we're still getting calls, uh, emergency management is still having a problem with nine one one because of the address change. And people are like, okay, colonial or Kennedy Hudson, the honorary is cleaner, it's faster, and they could have had the sign up. Now, my second suggestion, it'll be different when y'all finish this out, I'll talk about it, but it's really.
So what we're gonna have to do is actually resend.
It's cheaper to resend the ordinance.
The ordinance, because we had done the second reading, and then redraft it and visit it again on next month's meeting. And could you please, as honorary, could please contact the, the grandson? And let him know, and please explain the logistics of everything. So I didn't speak to him, I don't know what's going on, so. Okay, so at this, so at this time, I would like to rescind the motion that I put on the floor about the second reading, so can I have someone to rescind the order, the motion, please?
I made a motion that would rescind the motion to approve ordinance twenty four dash zero one.
May I have a second?
Our kids, do you accept your motion?
Any further discussion? May I have a vote? All right, Abraham?
Hi.
Any opposers? Let the record reflect this unanimously.
Now, can I add something, and it just?
Always true.
So with the street changes, I noticed that, you know, we have a lot of people that's gonna want to change the streets in the beginning. So it does cost the town money to port these signs on the streets. Um, if they're trying to change the street, I think that should not be a cost to the town. It should be a cost to the people that want to change the street. That's just my, I suggest. My suggestion. I, you know, we love our loved ones, and we wanna put the name in that, the street in their name, it should, if, if it's a, if you wanna change it, cuz these street signs cost money. Um, especially if you got a stop sign here, 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 you have to purchase those signs, um, also, the honorary, I think, should be a cost to the people that's trying to. I just, that's just my opinion. Of course, I'm gonna look out for the finances, so, yeah. I believe it, but.
Fine, we business town council, audit committee member selection, um, last month, we actually have a, now, we officially have an audit committee, which will be Mrs. Scott Gay and Stacey Woodard, but we do need a council member to, uh, sit on that board, so do I have a volunteer that would like to do?
I'm likely too busy, so I definitely cannot.
Uh, so, Mrs. Keesley Grace, would you like to, Mrs. Randolph, would you like to?
What goes in?
It's the audit committee.
And how, who, who really need it?
They, they need to, um.
Yeah, that's right. They don't have organizational need.
Yeah, right, they'll need to, it's an audit committee, but they'll be to decide on auditor for the town, and they'll bring that, um, to us, and then the council is the one that approves, whether they'll have it go or their suggestion or not.
It's crazy, I think like, we as leaders.
Something, what, we have, this is last year on this one, right? We had him for three years.
Colin Jones.
I mean, Colin Jones, we had him for what, two or three years?
We had two, cuz they, they called us up on all our audits.
Okay.
So, now it's time for us to renew.
Okay. So, y'all will be meeting in between now and then, are any, um, proposals we can get in, or if I move on?
Okay. The afternoon meeting, you'll be some stuff in exchange of information, so you'll keep in touch. Would you please let the director reflect that, Mrs. Randolph Williams will be, um, join the audit committee. Do I have any comments from the council?
Um, as usual, I like being for my mother community, I don't have much, um, summer school is in Old Hamilton, supporting kids, sending kids to summer school, especially for the extra help, um, we do have Tate with the summer program, we contacted her tour, but her, that she will be going in from time to time, helping kids with math, I don't know if we have, we're reading or any English books yet, um, ice cream social once again, August tenth, eighteen years, it will be at the Water Guy Turn apart, and that is all, I'm being to help now.
Uh, no, I, um, Kate, yes, I said, Mr. Williams, uh, since you're on the, you, you're, uh, since you're the council person, you're the chairman of the audit committee, so it will be up to you to call the, okay.
All the thing I have to say, I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Tate, I'm actually one of the speakers when I come back from Jamaica. So, I, I'm very, I'm looking forward, I already have some ideas for the children, so thank you for giving me the opportunity, appreciate it. Miss Anita?
No, I haven't got your permission.
Yeah, with that being said.
Happy Father's Day, yeah, all the fathers, happy Father's Day, that's what I wanna say.
I need to, I need to ask y'all at the council, out, out in the middle of Carver Hill, it's a stage.
Oh, yeah, call it what you call it.
I'm telling you, you know, I'm calling like a fit, it's a, a bit, it's like a lizard post.
Yep.
It's sitting out in the middle of Carver Hill, that thing ain't none, for snakes to get up on, get out there, I've had several people out there, and we're moving the bills on the east side of Hill Street, but I can't prove it without the council for that, but it always was, it's just sitting out there, and I, I don't even know the purpose of that thing did do.
It was built by University of Florida, students at the University of Florida, Helen Miller kind of built it for a stage, but only five people, three people probably can get up there, but, yeah. I'm gonna agree with it, I mean, we can call some of the, do you actually feel like it's unsafe?
I think, I mean, they say kids get up on it, and, I mean, I, I even tried to, you know, push it to the side, or the front, but you can't push it, it's gonna fall apart, and I, I mean, I'm not trying to cherish that. It's a sword, it's a video.
But if it's a fallen car, it's, it's.
There's a hazard, there's a falling car, so I have, um, a motion from the council to remove the stage at the, of Carver property. I'm gonna do it right stage, okay.
So, I need a river to make a motion to remove this stage, like, which is a post from the father's side.
May I have a second, please?
Time keeps the word second.
Any discussion? Now, vote, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think, cool.
Can you read it?
So, with that being said, in seven oh eight, anything just missing, he put up for justice.